Good evening, everyone. It's August 27th and Monroe Township Board of Education meeting. May we have a call to order? And the pledge allegiance, please. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the living public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Payne, maybe we do a moment of silence for that incident today in the Apple.
I'm sorry?
A moment of silence for the incident.
Well, we're going to do it when we come back, when we have a full. I mentioned this to Mr. Weiss, and we're going to wait till we have more people in the audience, yes. Thank you, Mr. Piero. A roll call, please.
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePayne?
Here.
Dr. Peck?
Here.
Mr. Piero?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
Ms. Sharma?
Here.
Mr. Tufano?
Here.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes, here.
Okay. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted October 25th, 2024, and August 20th, 2025, at all schools on the district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
You're welcome.
Ms. Ratner's walking in.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, wait one second, Ms. Ratner is on her way in. Whereas the Senator Byron M. Byer, Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10, call in 4-6, the act provides that the Monroe Township Board of Ed may hold an executive session from which the public is excluded to discuss matters that are confidential or are one of the nine subject matters listed in Section 12b of the act. And whereas that the board hereby declares that its discussion of the following subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interests being protected from disclosure. Now therefore be it resolved, excuse me, by the Monroe Township Board of Education that the board shall go into executive session to discuss the following additional items may determined and needed, second page, pending or anticipated litigation, and manners covered by the attorney-client privilege, and matters involving employees and terms of their employment and contract. While I have, I need a vote, we have to have Ms. Alvarez is going to be the secretary when we go into a closed session.
You can ask anything, please.
Oh, does anybody want to do, be the secretary?
We don't need to do, motion for closed session first.
I'm sorry, vote.
So, Mr. Payne just read the actual resolution, so let's have a motion and a second for closed?
Motion for closed.
Second.
Thank you.
Questions, discussion?
Thank you.
And then a roll call?
Roll call. Mm-hmm.
And then after this roll call, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have to appoint, by way of another motion, someone to take the minutes while we are in executive session. So Ms. Laura's going to call the roll now, and then we'll have that other motion.
Thank you, okay. Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Alvarez as temporary secretary.
Second by Ms. Bora.
Questions, discussion?
Yeah, is there any questions or discussions about this?
We can do all in favor?
All in favor?
Any opposed?
Opposed? Anybody abstain? Okay. We're going to go into closed session, we'll be back in open session at 7:15.
Yes.
We're going to open the public portion of the meeting at 7:15. I would just like everybody to stand for a moment, if you wouldn't mind, because of the tragedy today. I know this town has many religions, faiths, ethnicities, but today we have to come together because we are a school district, we have children. Children lost their lives today. So, let's have a moment of silence, pray the way you would pray in your religion, and keep praying for the families of those children and the families. Thank you very much.
Madam President, I have a motion.
Motion to open?
I have a motion I'd like to make.
Okay, Mr. Zeichner.
Okay. A motion that the Monroe Township Board of Education retain Patrick Madden as special counsel to conduct an employment investigation at the rate of $205 per hour. The business administrator and presidents are authorized to take actions to effectuate this action of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Zeichner.
Motion?
Is there a second?
I believe she was the second.
That was the second.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry. Roll call, Ms. Allen?
Questions.
I'm sorry, questions, discussions? I'll get with it. You're good? Anybody over here? Okay. Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
No.
Dr. Peck?
No.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Ratner?
Abstained due to conflict.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
No.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Madam President, you call Mr. Payne?
Yes.
I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ms. Bora? I would like to make a motion as well, that the Monroe Township Board of Education immediately reinstate Dr. Chanley and avoid further litigation charges that the district will have to pay. That's my motion.
Second. Questions?
Questions or discussion? Seeing none? Ms. Allen, could you take a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
No.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
No.
Ms. Ratner?
Abstained due to conflict.
Ms. Sharma?
No.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Motion does not pass.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns before we go? We're going into the interviews for the board vacancy right now. Ms. Allen has the name, and Ms. Tagliaferro will bring them in one by one. We have, yes, we also have to talk about, we had one applicant who requested to be heard in, be heard virtually tonight. So we need to discuss that. I need your opinions and what you think about the virtual. Ms. Ratner?
Mr. Weiss, is there any legalities from one point or another? I know that it says they must be interviewed in public. I know we have a policy or regulation that says board members may participate remotely. This is obviously unique, so if you can just elaborate.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Ratner. From a legal perspective, the process to fill a vacancy on the board takes the shape of whatever the board says it is. In other words, the board has its prerogative to determine how the interviews are to happen, or if there should be any interviews at all. The fact that this board has, someone who has asked to be interviewed virtually for one reason or another, leads it entirely up to the board as to whether or not the board is willing to allow that person to appear virtually. I would suggest that to the extent that there's a consensus, or should you want to allow an individual to appear virtually tonight for purposes of the interview, I would suggest that it be done by way of a motion and a vote, so that there's, you know, no question about what happened, and we're doing it out here in the public, in the sunshine, for purposes of transparency.
Okay, just, so, thank you. I, my personal opinion based on that information, I think because our legal notice didn't specify when the interviews were going to be held, just that they would be contacted to be scheduled because we didn't know if we were going to do it at this meeting, or if we would need a special meeting. And they weren't told necessarily until the last couple of days. I think we should allow, if someone wants to participate virtually, to do so, just to give them the same opportunity.
Is that your motion?
I figured we'd do discussion. No, we're still having discussion.
Ms. Bora has a, her answer.
Yeah, I just wanted to share the same opinion that because the timeline has been so up in the air, and it's also summer, I don't, I don't think it's wrong to do the interview virtually, but I feel like we do need to iron out the whole sequestering part because the people here are going to be in a separate room while we do the interview. We would have to ensure how we handle that for the remote candidate. Maybe start with the remote candidate, if we all agree to give the remote candidate an opportunity, we start with the remote candidate. That, I don't have anything against them doing the interview virtually, just because of the quick timeline that we had.
Right, Mr. Tufano?
And lack of notice.
I agree with what they said, I think we should allow the remote, but they should have to go first.
Okay. Mr. Zeichner?
Yeah, I, you know, if someone is going to take, wants to apply to the board and wants to give service to the community, I don't see how you can refuse that. So, we should go ahead, and as such, I like the motion.
No, I have a question.
Wait, Ms. Alvarez has a question?
Go ahead.
For a comment.
When did the candidate notify you that they needed a virtual interview? Did it come with the application, or at a later time?
Should there be a motion first?
If you know.
I, I'm try, I think, I believe it was Monday?
Ms. Allen, when were the candidates notified when the interviews would be?
Monday morning.
Okay.
Monday morning, they were notified.
The request was made on Monday as well?
I believe, because it went to Nancy, I believe it was Monday that she requested it.
Point of order? The point of order, please. Should we not be making a motion, second, and then discussion? Think would be the correct order, at least that's what Robert's by the law, so, we should make a motion, second it, then discussion.
Okay.
Seems, please.
I'll make a motion that the candidate that would like to appear for the vacancy position interview remotely be allowed to do so by the Monroe Township Board of Education.
Second.
Wait, and add?
And be the first candidate to be interviewed.
Okay, I need that added too, yes.
And I'll second.
And Mr. Zeichner, second it?
Mr. Tufano seconded it first.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tufano. Can I ask you, is the candidate, is the candidate ready if we call on her first?
She has to go first.
We would have to call her, and she's, if she would try to be the Alvarez.
You have to call?
Yes. Yes, Nancy can call.
Okay. Okay, roll call.
Any more?
Yeah, does anybody else have anything, anything else to say about the issue before we do a roll call?
Yes. Just one quick thing, without elaborating too much, my, besides just, you know, what Mr. Zeichner said, which I agree, if someone is willing to volunteer their time, we should at least allow them to be heard, without legal standing to say that they cannot participate, given some of the discussions we've had recently about our costs, I would not want to create a situation that makes this a concern in any, in any way. So that's the other thing I just wanted to mention.
Okay, thank you. Can you take a roll call, please, Ms. Allen?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
No.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
No.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
No.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePayne?
No.
So, motion passes.
Okay. So, you have to call her. Nancy will call.
Can we get her on, so, the people who are viewing can also hear it, or just the people in this room? How does that work?
How's it going to work?
Wait, ask the gentleman in IT how it's going to work, how they're going to do it.
I don't know how they're going to do it.
Excuse me?
I don't see how.
Like a speaker phone?
Is it on a microphone?
Is it to a microphone, on someone's phone, maybe?
I guess, I don't know. They need about 10 minutes.
10 minutes, so then we'll call the first person.
No, we can't.
We can.
She's got to. But just gave the motion.
Now we got to wait?
We have to wait 10 minutes.
Is there other?
So, the suggestion is to have the candidate call in to the WebEx, live WebEx. We just need about 10 minutes in order to be able to push them through as a participant, so then they can be heard via the virtual public as well as live in the room.
So could we start interviewing some of the other candidates while we're waiting?
No, because we just stated we would make her the first one.
Oh, okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
Well, we could change.
I'd like to make a motion that we skip this for now and go on with the.
Right, that's what we're going to do. Thank you very much, Mr. Tufano.
A second.
I don't think, I, to be honest with you, I don't think we need a motion because we're going to do that.
Yeah, okay.
It's part of the agenda. Yeah, we're going to do.
Why, just wasted a motion.
No, nothing's wasted here, Mr. Tufano.
They're free.
Yeah, they're free, they're free tonight. Okay, we're going to do number nine. The approval of minutes, page four.
Motion? Second. Um, which, okay, are we approving which ones?
Yes, questions or comments on the ones that I've attached?
Are we doing them all together?
Well, we can do, let me list them one at a time, okay? Public Board of Education Meeting, July 30th, 2025.
Motion? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained for the portion where conflict exists.
Okay. Special Board of Education Meeting, August 6th, 2025.
Motion?
Second.
Questions?
Any abstentions approved? Do I have any discussion on the three sets of board minutes that anyone would like to speak to tonight? Yes, Ms. Ratner?
Oh, I just, did we vote on the final one?
Yes. The closed one?
No, the special public.
Yes.
No, we haven't voted yet.
We did.
No, you're asking questions or comments on that last one.
On the special board meeting?
Correct.
Yes, yes.
Okay, no comments on the last one, that's fine.
Now? We can move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained? Okay, thank you. Thank you for your patience. Committee reports, number 10. Committee reports are on our website.
Great, she's ready.
She's ready, okay. So, if you need to look at the committee report, you can, you're welcome to go on the website and actually view the committee meetings, and read the reports from the chairs of the committees that we had, all the meetings last week. Yes, Ms. Ratner?
Um, just a quick question. I know that we had discussed having the committee meeting minutes on our agenda for people to see. I see some of them that are there. I know that the others are typically added onto wherever the committee is listed as minutes there, but it's a little bit harder to see for purposes of that meeting. And so, I also had, you know, tried to watch the other meetings like I usually do, there was, I think there might have been an issue with the recording on one of them. It may have been addressed, this was earlier on, the curriculum meeting, I don't think it was all recorded. And that's one of the ones, it just wasn't on the agenda. So I can go and look for it, but I just, I feel like there's some things being missed by us not having the reports in the meetings, especially when, if we have to look for them.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, Ms. Bora.
Mr. Payne, so I wanted to already apologize, this is my first time that I've not been able to put the minutes out before the meeting, moved my son in, I'll say, it's just been a rough week. But, the committee, the curriculum committee met virtually, and we, it was because of a power outage here. We were, we did record the streaming, I was assuming the streaming was made available, but if it was not, I do want to highlight a few things really quick on the curriculum committee, if I may take a few minutes. We approved about 22 curriculum documents across all K through high school, 12th grade. If, once the thing is up, and we are approving all of them tonight, good discussions around that. We got an update on the summer enrichment and the remediation piece, which I would like to give kudos to the entire team involved. This was our first summer of offering advancement in our math subjects. We had 47 students signed up, please correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Lehman, and the results of, were spectacular, from, you know, for the lack of a better word. Just for anybody who's not aware, typically our students would have to go outside of Monroe to Petty or South Brunswick and pay thousands of dollars there to, you know, to advance in math, and then they would come back here and give a test here in Monroe, and if they passed that test, they could move up. This time we offered that classes here in Monroe. This is a rigorous five hours a day, six weeks course that we had teachers teach, students take, 47 students took, and the results were phenomenal, so hats off to that. And we also offered remediation online, virtually this time this summer, a big step up. We had a lot of 70, correctly?
Between 70, high 70s, low 80s.
Students take that, and, but again, successful results. So, this was a great summer for the high school students that were moving up or doing remediation. Also, in the curriculum committee, we talked about esports. Personally, for me, that was a big moment. Three years ago, when I went to the NJSA workshop, I had spoken to Dr. Chanley that we should be taking, you know, interest in this. I'd actually dragged her to the Garden State Esport booth to, you know, talk to her about this, and she, since then, we've been talking back and forth about it, and then the NJSA Delegate Assembly voted on it this past spring, and I brought it back on the agenda, and I was informed by the administration in the last curriculum meeting that we will be able to start this program, the esports program, in December. There'll be details that'll follow through the administration, but that was a big step forward for this district. We're doing something new that is going to address a whole other demographic of students, and I can't be any more excited. Good luck to the team that's behind esports. So that was the update from curriculum. Finance, again, I've not been able to put the minutes for board members that have not been able to watch the meeting. While everything else was procedural, we are, we are voting on Genesis payroll component today. Last year, we approved of Genesis for our HR. We are trying to go paper-free, this is going to be automated, it's going to also tie into our HR component. Their initial setup fee for the payroll component is $50,000, and then every year the renewal is $10,000. But because we did not budget for this, and we have CSI this year, they've given us a break. It'll be $10,000 this year, and then we will pay $40,000 next year, the remainder of the setup, plus the $10,000. So that, it's just shifted, flipped for the first two years, and then going forward, it'll be $10,000 for renewal. And the committee agreed that this was a right step forward, and is up here for approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bora. Yep, Ms. Ratner, we have the candidate applicant online.
Okay, do you want to do that, and then we'll come back to committee reports, or do you want to finish this item? I mean, I just have two questions on that, so.
Finish the item for committee reports, and then we'll start the applicants.
Okay, so my first question was regarding just the Genesis portion. Is there a cost savings component to switching over to Genesis from what we were using previously?
What we're using now is about $14,000 a year. So, actually, when it becomes just the maintenance fee, it'll be $10,000 for payroll and $5,000 for the HR, so it will be just, it'll be even, when we, once we get past the setup. Does that make sense?
But there's a lot of paper trail.
Well, let Ms. Ratner's not finished with her question.
I was just kind of, yeah.
You want another question?
I have, but it's not about Genesis, so.
Okay.
I was just supporting.
Mr. Piero?
Yeah, I, I thought we had discussed this payroll piece a while ago, and I was understanding that the payroll people liked the system they were using, and didn't want to switch to this. So is there a reason why we were switching?
There's been a change in payroll staffing, and actually, the person, the payroll supervisor now has had experience using Genesis in her previous district.
Okay, I was just curious, because I know we had discussed it, and it was.
Yes, there was a time, and we were waiting to see.
We want to keep the old system, but we talked about adding, so I was just curious.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Thank you. Ms. Bora, did you have?
I just wanted to comment on the cost savings that Ms. Ratner, while this is $14,000 and this is going to be $10,000 per year, the system setup fee, but more than that, we are going to be automated, we are going to be paper-free. There's a lot of spreadsheets, mergers, and literally paper sign, paper movement between offices for payroll right now that is unheard of. I think we're a few years behind on the top. Dr. Lehman, feel free to.
It's a significant increase in efficiency, in terms of the timelines from an affidavit being started to an affidavit being processed by payroll. As has been alluded to, right now, things are hand-generated, physically signed in buildings, physically stamped, date-stamped, inter-office mailed via vehicle courier to multiple stops along the way, and oftentimes it takes much longer than it should to get from point A to the end game, and that affects pay periods, it chunks pay in certain chunks, which, it impacts healthcare deductions, pension deductions, so this will streamline the process, it will clean it up, it'll help on the accounting side. It's just a general well, long, long overdue process, and it syncs right with HR, so changes that happen in HR, link right into payroll, and vice versa. It makes a lot of sense, it's the next step in, in what we need to do to modernize our system. Well, we need less personnel then, if we're not going paper and moving things now that everything's. Well, right, so right now, a lot of the people that are doing the paperwork piece are building principles, you know, so they're, it's part of their daily routine, they would do that digitally, so there's still that verification that the work was done, you know, the curriculum documents that get written, an affidavit is submitted, so we review the document, once it's done, once it's board-approved, then we go through the process of verifying. The payroll part, though. Yeah, when we get to the payroll department, you know, once it's in action, we'll take a look and see what, you know, what the workflow is down there.
Okay. I did, my, my second thing, I did want to comment on esports, but we can hold off on that until there's further discussions in curriculum. I just wanted to highlight one thing from the LACE committee, which was, we had a discussion about parent and student communication for the start of the school year, which I felt was very important for parents to know, and there are probably more people watching this than watched our committee meeting. And so I just wanted to highlight that, that most people by now have probably logged on to Genesis and done their required forms, but there is a portion of Genesis about communication that is really important for people to log in and make sure that all of their information is updated, and that, it may have changed now, I think, Dr. Lehman, you mentioned that the default is they receive communication unless they have opted out. It's just a general well-long overdue process, and it syncs right with HR. So changes that happen in HR link right into payroll and vice versa. It makes a lot of sense, it's the next step in what we need to do to modernize our system.
Well, we need less personnel then, if we're not going paper and moving things now that everything's.
Well, so right now, a lot of the people that are doing the paperwork piece are building principals. You know, so it's part of their daily routine, they would do that digitally. So there's still that verification that the work was done. You know, the curriculum documents that get written, an affidavit is submitted. So we review the document, once it's done, once it's board-approved, then we go through the process of verifying.
The payroll part, though.
Yeah, when we get to the payroll department, you know, once it's in action, we'll take a look and see what the workflow is down there.
Okay.
My second thing, I did want to comment on esports, but we can hold off on that until there's further discussions in curriculum. I just wanted to highlight one thing from the LACE Committee, which was, we had a discussion about parent and student communication for the start of the school year, which I felt was very important for parents to know, and there are probably more people watching this than watched our committee meeting. And so I just wanted to highlight that most people by now have probably logged on to Genesis and done their required forms. But there is a portion of Genesis about communication that is really important for people to log in and make sure that all of their information is updated and that it may have changed. Now, I think, Dr. Lehman, you mentioned that the default is they receive communication unless they have opted out. At one point, I know we were having issues with that. But either way, maybe just check the emails and phone numbers that are listed there and where you want to receive communications, so that you don't miss anything.
Thank you. And we're going to go back to the interviews for the board vacancy. We do have the applicant, Ms. Tagley Pharoah. Is she on the line now? Okay? And.
Okay, so this first interviewee will be Rashni Shaw.
I'm sorry, could you say, I didn't hear the name.
Rashni Shaw.
Oh, okay.
Yes, okay. Rashni, this is Gail DuPain, I have the first, we have three questions, you have ten minutes to answer them. The first question is, why do you want to be a board member?
Hi, Gail, thank you so much. Can you all hear me?
Very well, very well.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I promise you, I'm not speaking very loudly here. But I did want to thank you all for the opportunity for allowing me to speak verbally. It's just obviously very close to Labor Day, so we were just on vacation. But I really appreciate you, the entire board, allowing me to kind of interview virtually. So thank you very much for that, I appreciate it. So, you know, I really appreciate your question in terms of why I want to serve as a Board of Education member. I do believe that every student deserves access to a high-quality education that prepares them for success in life. I'm really passionate about ensuring that our schools provide safe, inclusive, and supportive environments where all children can thrive. By joining the BOE, I'd like to contribute my skills, experiences, and perspectives to help shape our policies and allocate our resources responsibly, and also advocate for programs that benefit both students and educators. And then, just to give you a little bit about myself, I have two boys in the schools. I have a younger child at Oak Tree Applegate Elementary School. I also have an older child at the middle school. I serve on the parent organizations for both schools. And I really see what giving back to the community does. I really see how excited the kids get as you roll out different programs for them and what collaboration between a parent and administrator really means. So I collaborate very strongly and very deeply with the different administrators in both those schools, and I see what a difference that makes, and I think that's really important. From a professional perspective, I work in strategy and operations, and what does that really mean, right? But one of the biggest things that I do in my current role is I manage very large-scale budgets, and I think that could be, I think that could be a strength towards the Board of Education. I'm not sure if there's anything else you ought to hear, but I'm happy to share.
Two more questions, Rashni. Could you please describe any previous or current volunteer experience you've had within our community?
Sure, absolutely. So I think I just spoke to it a little bit. I serve on the Board of Directors for the Oak Tree Applegate PTA, as well as the Monroe Township Middle School PSA. So within those activities, right, again, I collaborate with the administrators, and I help them shape different programs, et cetera. I also work very closely with the staff as well. So I work with the staff to kind of determine, you know, we kind of, we work together to ensure that the communication is streamlined, different things like that. So every year, I think we get a step closer to just being better, right? Being better with collaborating with the administrators, being better with collaborating with the staff, and being better with collaborating with the parents. So I do both of those two things from a volunteer basis for the community. Also, not directly part of Monroe Township, but I also serve as a STEM mentor for college students at Rutgers, where I help them kind of, I look at their resumes, I help them advance their careers, I try to connect them with folks that can help them for their future.
Okay, thank you. The last question, what specific skills would you bring to the board?
Yeah, that's a great question. I bring in a combination of professional expertise, personal commitment, and community involvement that aligns with the responsibilities of the role. I spoke to my background in strategy and operations, but I think that's given me the skills in leadership, in problem-solving, and strategic decision-making. And I think that directly applies to overseeing some of the district policies and the budget. But more importantly, as a parent, I also have firsthand experience with the strengths and challenges of our school system. I understand the importance of advocating for both our students, our staff, and especially our taxpayers. I'm committed to ensuring that those resources are used effectively to support academic achievement and equity, and also student well-being. I also, you know, I've mentioned my proven record of collaboration and service, whether that's through PTO involvement or coaching college students, et cetera. I believe those experiences have prepared me to listen to the diverse perspectives, build consensus, and help me make the best decisions in the interests of the community and the children.
Thank you very much for your time. I'm glad we were able to get you on virtually tonight, and enjoy the rest of your vacation.
Oh, thank you so much, I really appreciate it. Have a great rest of your day.
You too, thank you. The next candidate?
Yes, the next candidate is Joanne Newell. Newell, N-O-O-L.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Newell.
Thank you.
We have three questions for you, and we all have ten minutes to get through the three questions, okay? Okay, the first one is, why do you want to be a board member?
Okay, so I want to be a board member because I've been in Monroe for almost six years now. My family have moved here right before COVID from New York, and I currently have a child in Brookside High School, one just who graduated and started his first day in college yesterday, which is very exciting. I've always been involved in the school events, whether it be room parent, fundraising, any kind of events that, you know, book fair, just, I think the more parents are involved in the school activities and what's going on in the schools is very important, just having that support. So I would like to be able to at least provide my experiences and, you know, background, history in investment banking to kind of help ensure the students can be on a path where they're most successful once they step out of Monroe Township High School. And, you know, so whatever endeavors they may follow after that, whether it be college, trade school, services, or even just straight-to-work if they're lucky enough, right, and don't have to owe any college bills. So, you know, I'm not a native Monroer, which some people might be like, a little bit, you know, have a little bit of trepidation about it. But I think for me, that might be a positive, because I don't know many of the members from previous or current, so there's no bias. I won't be taking any sides, I'll just make decisions based off of what I truly believe is best for the student, the staff, the school, and just the Monroe community as a whole, because it does affect everybody.
Okay, thank you. And going along, you started to share some of your volunteer work. Can you tell us what, or describe any previous or current volunteer experience you have had within our community here in Monroe?
In the school specifically, I've volunteered and helped with the book fairs. That's my regular thing that I do. I'm currently helping with my children's marching band, marching band parents, which requires a lot of time. And then outside of this, you know, I take my daughter on joyful rides of dropping off donations to libraries, drop-off centers, just kind of have her, show her that, you know what, we need to give back and help people. Also, I think Ross Moore, I'm not sure, there's a Nancy there who kind of have this, you know, community going, which I think is great, just helping everybody, you know. So I kind of drop off donations there, I'm actually dropping off cookies next week. So just, you know, trying to be as involved and helpful, because I do think that we're in a very fortunate situation comparatively. I'm not rich or anything, but I think, you know, I'm fortunate compared to many people. So just kind of having to give back, and, you know, it helps the community as a whole, basically.
Yes, thank you. And the last question, what specific skills would you bring to the board?
I'm not a confrontational person. I think personally, I'm very friendly, and I get along with a lot of people. So I think having that helps along with, when it comes to making decisions. I think from what I saw from the past and just hearing things, I think maybe people's passions for the school, what is best for the school may have maybe crossed some lines and then made it where it's not possible to make best decisions for the schools and the children, right? So I think for me, I'm able to talk things out from my past management experiences, just collaborating with a lot of people from different diversities, you know, backgrounds, and working as a team to resolve problems in an adult manner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It was nice hearing from you.
Thank you.
All right.
I appreciate it, I appreciate everybody who showed up.
Thank you.
Well, she's talking. Yeah, that's fine. That's fine, yes. She's talking to. Okay, so the next candidate is Ann Cugini. It's Ann Cugini.
Hello.
Hi, how are you, how are you doing, Ann?
Great, how are you?
Good. We just have three questions for you tonight, and we're giving ten minutes.
Oh, ready?
To answer the questions. Okay, the number one is, why do you want to be a board member?
I've always been a person that helps. Ever since my kids were in school, I've always been part of PTOs, different committees, organized events. Even currently now, I was just on a meeting, my daughter got on the high school volleyball team freshman year, so they just had a parents' meeting, and I'm waiting to see what my role will be there. I'm actively involved currently with the marching band and performing arts department. I just like to help, and I see that the board can use it. I ran a couple of years ago, and I just feel that I'm very level-headed, I'm open-minded. I welcome different ideas, suggestions. Maybe between two people coming together can form a great answer to a problem, or maybe even see something that no one else saw. I like to think outside of the box, and that's really it. When I saw that there was an opening, I thought that maybe this was just a great opportunity to come on.
Thank you. Number two, could you please describe any previous or current volunteer experience you've had within our community?
So, like I said before, especially through the schools, I am constantly here volunteering. This past summer, I was helping with the marching band, so that takes a lot of time. I also volunteered through my daughters' like Girl Scouts. Whenever they had any community events, I was always there helping out with them. I volunteered at my church whenever they needed help, I'm an active member there. But primarily, I am always here, to the point where some of the security guards know me by name.
Okay, good. And the last question, what specific skills would you bring to the board?
I think I'm very organized. I think I am a great listener. I think I am capable of hearing all sides. I'm very level-headed, which I think is very important. And I like to look for answers, maybe in areas that other people haven't necessarily looked in yet.
Okay, great, thank you very much for your time.
All right, have a good night.
You too.
Oh, okay, the next candidate is Sarah Aziz.
Hello, Ms. Aziz.
Hello.
You're going to have ten minutes, and there's a total of three questions, okay? The first one is, why do you want to be a board member?
I would like to be a board member because I care deeply about the success of Monroe Township Public Schools, both as a longtime community member and a parent of three children in our school district, including a child with special needs. My personal connection drives my commitment to making sure that every child, regardless of background or ability, receives a high-quality and inclusive education. Also, I bring about over a decade of experience in finance and accounting. I know how to analyze budgets and make sure that our tax dollars are spent wisely for the benefit of our students. I also serve on the New Jersey Council on Developmental Disabilities, where I advocate for children with disabilities on the state level.
Thank you. The next question, could you please describe any previous or current volunteer experience you have had within our community?
Well, I've volunteered in my children's classrooms, I've also participated in educational fundraisers. This has given me a firsthand understanding of the dedication our teachers have to our students and the importance of school and family partnerships. I've also watched every single board meeting since December 2019, and nearly every committee meeting since March 2020. So I already know a lot about the board and how the committees work. And I, not only, sometimes I watch the meetings, I re-watch the meetings, I write about the meetings to inform the broader community about what goes on here, because it's so impactful to our students. And, you know, there are few things that are more important to me than the education of my children. And so that's really what drives me. As I said, on the state level, I advocate for children with disabilities and their families. I also stay informed about the broader trends in education, which helps me connect local challenges to the larger conversations about funding, inclusion, and academic standards.
Okay, thank you. And the final question, what specific skills would you bring to the board?
Well, I bring my financial expertise. I know how to analyze budgets, prepare budgets, ask the tough but necessary questions. I also have experience in policy as it relates to children with special needs in terms of evaluating legislation and how it impacts our community. And I also, in addition to the financial expertise and the experience in advocacy, I also bring a lot of community engagement skills. I think it's so important to keep the community informed about what goes on and encourage engagement and community participation in the decisions that occur here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next candidate is Santok Singh. Sarah, you could stay if you want.
Yes, you could stay, Sarah. As long as you're finished, you can stay.
Could you please give me the name again?
The gentleman.
Yes, fine.
Santok Singh.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Singh.
How are you?
We have three questions for you this evening, and ten minutes to answer them.
Sure.
First question is, why do you want to be a board member?
Well, my son goes to Mill Lake because he's going to be part of that education system for a pretty long time, so I'd rather be part of the solution-making rather than complaining about it on the other side of it.
Oh, okay. Number two, could you please describe any previous or current volunteer experience you've had within our community?
Not in this township, but I do it outside, where I mentor kids in different schools for the career choices that they make.
Okay, and the third question, what specific skills would you bring to the board?
Well, I served in the military for eleven years right after high school. Self-taught for the technology part of it. I've been working in New York since 1998 in various different industries, from healthcare to the technology. from healthcare to the technology part of it. Now, I work at financial firm managing the cybersecurity, which is, I think, where a lot of the kids are now going with the technology and AI and everything else that's coming along. I do a lot of mentorship for a lot of the kids as part of the corporate mentoring program.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
The next candidate is Bass Massoud. B-A-S-S.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
How are you?
Thank you.
So, we have three questions for you and you'll have 10 minutes to answer. So, we're gonna start with the first question. Why do you want to be a board member?
Because I can be a board member. You need a board member. I've been a board member, treasurer, and working for schools and nonprofit organizations for 12 years. I've been doing this, I even, I'm even the treasurer of the Monroe Soccer Club for three years now. I know the community, love to serve the community. I also served my church since middle school, St. Mary's in East Brunswick. So, I guess I can this, I can do this. I started my career in finance and accounting for investment banking, Bloomberg, Merrill Lynch. Then I got married and moved to nonprofits and private schools, finance, managing the schools, the finances of a couple of schools. My accounting firm here in Summer Road, serving schools and nonprofit organizations. I have the time. I have the background and skills. I would love to do this. I've been a volunteer for over a decade now. Over the past nine years, I've been the senior finance director at NJCEDV, New Jersey Coalition and Domestic Finance. That's the coalition that serves the nonprofit organizations around New Jersey, providing finance and technical support to them. That gives me exposure to the representatives, the senators. I worked with Senator Booker, Representative Ben Mendes. I have enjoyed this. I know how to approach when something is needed for my community.
Okay, thank you. You may have answered some of these already, but I, we wanna be fair and ask the same question.
Sure.
So, the next one is, could you please describe any previous or current volunteer experience you have had within our community?
Sure. I've been the Monroe Soccer Club treasurer for the past three years. That gave me the chance to serve the Monroe community. I have been a deacon at my church for over 20 years, serving Middlesex County in general. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And the final question, what specific skills would you bring to the board?
Sure. Finance mainly, nonprofit and school, accounting and finance management, accounting for the past and finance for the future. Another skill I have that I have been working with multiple board sets, whether for schools, nonprofit organizations, whether presenting a budget or working or creating a budget from the scratch. I join when there is a hassle or a problem. Try to help out. Most of the time, I help out. In other words, if I'm not in a finance committee or helping with the finances, I know how board sets work. I know how to come and be prepared. When it comes to administration, I know how to look at a vendor bid, compare. I know how to look into positions, salaries, and fringe benefits and compare and look into the market and see how things can be better, how we can fix things together. I know how to approach and ask the right question without offending anyone, without making things sensitive. I have the time. I guess that's rare nowadays. I guess I have the time since I'm not a full-time employee. I own my private business, so I guess I'll help out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You could remain in here if you'd like.
And the final candidate is Eric Marazini. Hi, good evening to you.
Good evening.
We have three questions that we put together and you have 10 minutes to answer the three questions. Number one, why do you want to be a board member?
I wanna be a board member because I feel like I would be helpful to the community. I would contribute to the board. One of the, my greatest qualities, I would say, is working with a lot of different people. I may not always agree with everything that everybody says or does, but I find ways to work with people. And one of my experiences with, I'm on the, I was appointed by the county commissioners on the Middlesex County Board of Social Services. And one of the, my tasks is coming up with different ways to come to a conclusion and be able to meet the same goal, even if we have different ideas. So, that's kinda why I wanna help. I feel like I would be a great help to the community and asset to the board.
Okay, number two, could you please describe any previous or current volunteer experience you have had within the community?
Well, the one I just mentioned. I also help. So, I own a preschool in Jamesburg. So, we do a lot of community work. We give back. We do candy drives for those who are not fortunate during like Halloween. We perform at the Jamesburg Monroe Memorial Day Parade. Our kids perform. So, I find ways that the kids, and most of them are from Monroe, I would say 99%, and I try and find ways to incorporate my business and then have them give back to the community.
Okay. And the last question is, what specific skills would you bring to the board?
So, I have budget skills, you know, for my business. I have a background in education. I started out in the public sector. I worked at two separate public schools, mainly for a receiving district. I did different work through that. I worked on a technology committee. I did various programs throughout that time and then that led me to what I'm doing now, owning a preschool. With, it's in Jamesburg, but like I said, most of our children are through Monroe. And some of our children that have graduated through our programs, they're actually gonna be entering high schools this year. So, I have multiple families that I feel like I'm obligated just to help support them throughout their careers, you know, as long as, as well as just supporting the community with as much as I can. I just, I feel the need to give back and that's why I'm here today.
Great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
You could stay and be seated if you like. We're going to go into closed session to make a discussion on candidates presented this evening because I want to, I wanna make sure that the seat is filled before we start in September. So, Mr. Pirro.
I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We'll be out in a few.
So, the board's gonna go into executive session to discuss confidential matters related to the interviews this evening. The board will come out of executive session and it's anticipated that there will be a vote tonight to appoint the candidate. The vote will happen here in the public. The discussion about the candidates will occur in executive session. So, we will come back out and we will vote. It's anticipated that we will come out and we will vote to appoint the candidate this evening.
And to the board members, I'd like somebody to make a motion to appoint.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion to appoint Ms. Alvarez as the secretary for this closed session.
Second?
Second by Ms. Ratner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All for your patience, we tried to do the best we could. Gonna reopen the meeting to our regular meeting. Can someone?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Secker.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion regarding what we discussed. Can I do that now?
Are you looking to nominate?
Yes, I'm looking to nominate one of the very fine candidates. All the candidates, first I'd like to...
Did you open before?
Yeah, she did open. First thing I'd like to say is that I personally, and I know, I know the board probably feels the same way I do, I'd like to thank the candidates who came up. I thought you were all absolutely wonderful and I must commend you for willing to give your time to serve on the board. Having said that, I really feel that there was one candidate that truly was, for the most part, above and beyond the rest of the candidates. And that person is Sarah Z. And I just feel that she brings with her an awful lot of information. Her background is extraordinary. Her background and her service to this community is extraordinary. And I really feel that she would be a tremendous benefit to this board. So, I would like to make a motion.
You're making the motion.
I'm making a motion that Sarah Z be appointed to this board.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Pirro.
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'm sorry.
Yes, no, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Roshi Shah, please.
Is there a second on that nomination for Rajneesh Shah?
If I second this, can I still make another nomination?
Yes.
I second this.
Seconded by Ms. Bora. Ms. Bora?
Yes, I would like to nominate Joanne Newell for this position, please.
Is there a second for Ms. Newell?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tifana? Yes, Ms. Ratner?
I'll make a motion to nominate Anne Cugini.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Tifana. Are all nominations closed? Do we have any more? So, we'll take a vote.
Yeah, if I could just make a statement for the public. The board's policy provides that when there are multiple nominations, such as that which we have here, there will be a vote on each nominee, starting with the first nominee, until we have the majority votes. So, for example, if the first person who was nominated, there's a vote on it and we don't have a majority, we'll then move on to the second nominee and take a vote until we have a majority vote. So, we may be sitting here for a few minutes or we may not.
We need six votes for any...
Yes.
Five, because we have a nine-member.
It's a nine-member.
Only nine-member board recommends.
Well, is it the majority here or the majority of the?
It's the majority of the full membership.
Full membership.
So, then six.
Six.
Everyone understand?
Are you sure about that? Because the last five, we only needed five.
Let me just double-check with it.
Yes.
Mr. Weiss is checking for us.
Last vacancy, we only needed five.
Yes, they only needed five the last.
Bear with me one moment.
Sure. It says a majority.
A majority of the full membership of the board.
Of the remaining board members.
Yeah, so, so here we go.
The policy says of the remaining board members.
I'm looking at the statute though. Statue says it requires an affirmative vote of the majority of the full membership of the board. Six votes.
Six. Okay. Ms. Allen?
Okay.
So, it's the first to say we're voting for Sarah.
Well, Ms. Allen can say, she's got, she's been, she wrote everything down.
I just have a question.
Yes.
When you say majority, and I understand, you have a total of just nine here that are right now on the board.
Right.
Now, wouldn't the majority of the board members who are present, nine, wouldn't five constitute the majority?
So, if I can't...
One second. Let him, he's checking right now. Let's double-check with Mr. Weiss.
Right, this was about the statute.
Right.
So, last time the board voted, I guess they didn't follow the statute?
Can we take a five-minute research while our attorney checks us out to make sure we do the right thing? Okay, we wanna be transparent and make sure that everything is up and up. So, give us five minutes, please. If anybody wants to get up, take a break and Mr. Weiss will double-check first.
Thank you. So, for everyone here, based upon my additional research, it's my opinion that five will be needed, which is a majority of the remaining board members.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Weiss, is that what the statute says or is that what our policy says? This would be in accordance with the statute. Your policy probably cited on this.
Can you just read that part of the statute just for information?
I don't have it up on the, I was looking at like case law and other stuff, so I didn't.
The policy goes along with what you said.
Yeah, it does. Yes, it says it right here.
A majority vote of the remaining board members.
Yeah, it's majority of...
Remaining board.
The only, without seeing the statute in front of me, which will take me three minutes to get it back up, it's a majority of the membership of the board that remains.
And that's what our policy says.
So, that's what we're...
So, we're right on, right on the money, okay? Everyone, do I have any questions or anything about it here on the board members? Okay. Ms. Allen?
Okay, so this is for Sarah Aziz.
I'm sorry, wait one second. Ms. Ratner?
Just because when I, I had pulled up the New Jersey School Board's number, the voting requirements, which specifies, it says full membership means the number of board members when all the member seats are filled.
And then it says consult the board attorney for a dis...
It actually doesn't, believe it or not. Not on the one I'm looking at, at least. Maybe it's at the bottom.
Well, that's what we pay, Mr. Weiss.
Right, but so I was just reading that first paragraph, which is...
Take a look at page three of what you're probably looking at.
Oh, golly gee. Oh, no, it's page five for me. When in doubt, the board should take action by roll call vote and consults board attorney. But just because that top part specifies the full members, like it's not...
Yeah, it's my...
It's weird.
It's my position that it's of the remaining and so that would be five.
Yeah, if I can just make a general comment, not legal, it would have been, it would make sense, it still makes sense in my head that we get six. That means the majority of the board is aligned with that choice. But, we do what the laws is.
That's right. Okay. We're all settled on that now? All right, Ms. Allen, if you would please.
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
No.
Dr. Peck?
No.
Mr. Pirro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Upstein.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufana?
Hell, no.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes for Sarah Aziz.
Okay.
To be a member of the Board of Education.
Congratulations, Ms. Aziz. You're leaving, Mr. Tufana?
Yeah.
Well, you enjoy the rest of your night.
Yeah, I will, thank you. Enjoy the rest of your conspiracy.
Okay. Oh, now my husband's up.
Okay, because this was like in front of me saying.
We can still do.
Oh, no, no, we just did it.
Madam President, I just have to make this comment.
Please, excuse me, everybody, Mr. Zeichner is speaking. Excuse, ladies, Mr. Zeichner is speaking. You know, I'm going to use this, I couldn't wait to use this. Now, Mr. Zeichner wants to say, has a comment.
Madam President, and with all due respect, and I direct this to you because it should be directed to you, but that behavior on the part of Mr. Tufano is so unprofessional. I mean, he is a member of this board, because things don't necessarily go his way, is absolutely no reason for him to depart from this board and like this, that's really unacceptable. I'm sorry, totally unacceptable.
Well, you shouldn't be sorry, unfortunately.
But that's my FBO and now I'm.
Unfortunately, Mr. Tufano left, but let's go on with, Mr. Pirro?
And I agree with Mr. Zeichner, dropping the F-bomb in a public meeting is, and you're supposed to represent children, is a disgrace.
Okay, well, we're done with that, we're moving on now.
Point of order.
Point of order, please. We're going to make.
Where are we?
No, that's it, we just have to.
We have to swear in Ms. Aziz. Statutory oath. Ms. Aziz, would you mind coming up to the table here, please?
Is she doing it here? This table?
That table. Do you, are you doing it or?
I can do it.
Laura, do you want him to do it or you want?
I, Sarah Aziz, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Sarah Aziz, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, and I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. I, Sarah Aziz, do solemnly swear and declare that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to R.S.S. dot nineteen colon four dash one, and that I am not disqualified to hold this office due to a conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA eighteen A colon twelve dash one, so help me God.
Congratulations, Ms. Aziz. If you could join us up here next to Mr. Pirro. I was going to move on to the next section, but Mr. Pirro asked me, out of his committee reports, he wants to make a small report about Applegarth, so we could, Mr. Pirro, could you please?
Yeah, I'd just like everybody to know that I know that some people aren't aware of exactly what's going on, but we are doing the Raw Grant, we're doing a lot of construction in Applegarth School. Unfortunately, due to a delay in an electronic switch gear, which is scheduled to arrive to us or be shipped on August twenty ninth, it's going to delay us in the opening school approximately thirty days. So, Dr. Lehman, I'm sure he'll touch on this, he's worked with Dr. Higgins at the middle school, Dr. Graziano and Applegarth School, Longwood Administration, to come up with a plan where we will be using, utilizing the trailers of the middle school and classrooms inside the middle school to house the Applegarth students for approximately, roughly a month, until we could get Applegarth fully opened. The original plan, according to Mr. Tagg, was if we were able to open it, the HVAC wasn't going to be complete and contractors would have to come in every night and open the, you know, run events and everything in the school. The way this is going to work out now is that since nobody will be in the school, Mr. Tagg believes that we could get all the construction complete before we actually reopen the school. So, it's unfortunate, but it was a delay in the equipment and that's what's putting this off, but I'd like to thank the administration for really doing a great job and making sure that we start school off properly. Mr. Lehman, would you like to add anything?
Dr. Lehman, do you have anything to add?
Sure, so we had a information session last night for parents and students. It was a tremendous turnout, there were several hundred parents there, which means there were several hundred students there. We had tremendous staff that took the students around through the building, they got to see some classrooms where the nurse's office was, they started in the cafeteria, they got to see where their outstanding lunches will be taking place. In the parent orientation side, we shared pickup and drop-off information, we shared a day in the life of your student, Applegarth student at the middle school. There's a lot of positive feedback, some good questions, and, you know, we're really set and ready to go. We recognize there's going to be some bumps along the road. There is naturally bumps along the road the first three days of school in terms of transportation and delays that we, as we get in our routines, but, you know, expectations are clear out there about the order of the dismissal and arrival processes, and there's just been a tremendous amount of collaboration between the middle school and Applegarth. It's the best-case scenario in this unanticipated, although we, you know, had enough heads up we could plan for this, and less-than-ideal situation. So, we will move forward, we're looking at October third, all students back at Applegarth. If there's a window, because the construction's on early, we can certainly use even the days off we have the week before to move students back in as well. So, we are set and ready to go. The Applegarth office is set up at the middle school. When you call Applegarth School, it rings at the middle school, at the Applegarth office. If you call the middle school, there is a menu feature that you can choose and they'll send you right into Applegarth, or you just get into the middle school office and they'll, you know, pass you right along. So, you know, every, everything that we thought, we can think of, anything that teachers thought of, any feedback we got from parents, we're taking that all into account and, you know, trying to make this as seamless as possible.
Thank you, Dr. Lehman.
Yep.
Yes, Ms. Ratner?
Yeah, so I just wanted to commend you and the rest of the administrative team, Dr. Graziano, Dr. Higgins, for working together to get this all ready in time. I know it wasn't something that we all wanted to deal with. I also just wanted to ask, from what I remember, the part that we were waiting for was, had a delivery date of around today or tomorrow, right?
Shipping, shipping date of August twenty ninth.
Shipping date, not arrival date.
Shipping, August twenty ninth.
Shipping of August twenty ninth.
Yes.
Okay.
And then the electrician developed an installation plan that concludes his work right at the end of September, and then the last week in September, which has the first few days in October, we're, have a half day and we're off one of those days.
Right.
So, the plan right now is to transition back for that Friday, which is October third.
Okay, and then just to clarify for, because the shipping date is two days from now, have we heard that there's any potential delays as of yet or everything's on schedule?
No, we have a shipping commitment for that day, and then as soon as we know it's on a truck, we'll be even happier. As soon as it gets on site, it'll, we'll be even happier because we know it won't be damaged, and then once we install it and we get everything rolling and it's in our hands, we'll be even more comfortable. But what we have right now is the ship date commitment, and that's what we've had for the August twenty ninth.
Ms. Bora, yeah, comment?
Despite the bad luck of the timing of the part, I think everything else pretty much fell in place. I don't know if Mr. Pirro mentioned it, but I want to highlight, you know, when light gives you lemon, we make lemonade. One of the good things that came out of this is the work on Applegarth that was going to happen after hours, because the students are going to be in the middle school building for the next few weeks, we will be able to continue that work during hours, which just makes it easier in terms of operations, and we'll probably get that done sooner.
Yes.
If you want to add to that.
The second shift work, as it explained to us, is if it were to take place when the students were, you know, in school during the day, they have to come in, then they would say, if they're working the ceilings, remove ceilings, which is a step that they don't have to take now, do their work, reassemble everything. Now, we can leave those ceilings down to continue the work. It's more efficient and they can move, they have more time to actually do the work instead of disassemble and reassemble the building to get it ready for kids the next day. So, that is a benefit, we will continue to, you know, work on that project during the day now, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions? Okay, we're going to go to the public forum, only agenda items only. Please come up to the podium. We do have a sign-up list, you don't have to sign it. If you have a question that's not answered in the four minutes and you would like it answered, please write your name, number, and the question so that we're able to get back to you, okay? We don't want to miss anybody's questions. Anybody else would like to come up and speak?
George Gunkelman Monroe. New Jersey is mandating full-time kindergarten for all of New Jersey by twenty-nine-thirty. Does Monroe have a plan to meet this mandate?
Sir, would you like, excuse me, would you like the answer from your questions after you ask them or wait to the end? It's your choice.
Well, I have one other question, and my other question was, in the last meeting when we talked about Applegarth, it was brought out that there were penalties for not completing on according to the schedule. Now, outside of the issue of the switch gear and how that's being handled, are there any penalties for the non-electrical work that clearly hasn't been completed? Are we getting any credits back from the contractors that they didn't meet the deadline?
So, the HVAC work, part of the plan was to do the work during second shift once school started, so they are on track for their work. What we have the advantage of now is taking, taking the daytime hours to be, to get more of that work done because they're not assembling and reassembling. So, they are on track, roofing work is scheduled to be done on time as well.
And all the other contractors are, have met their scheduled commitments?
Yes, yep.
Okay, then I'd like to go back to my other question, if someone could respond to, do we have a plan as a community for meeting the state mandate for all-day kindergarten?
Yes, yep. So, and I will be providing an update when we do the strategic plan update, which is looking like it'll be the September board meeting, and we'll do the student data presentation in October. One of our strategic plan, one of our goals was really doing a deep dive into full-day K, what does that look like for us over the next couple of years, next year and maybe a few years out? We will have a plan in place to meet that deadline, I think we will definitely meet it before that. I will share details about what, if we do something for next year, what does that look like? What are our options, what are some of the barriers we have in front of us, some of the variables about making it work on a short-term basis versus a long-term plan, and I'll provide some details when I give the strategic plan update.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I have one further comment. I appreciate that we can access committee meetings online, but as long as it's on the agenda, that we have the committee reports, I as a public person who comes to the meeting and that's kind of the meat of it, much of the rest of the agenda is boilerplate and, you know, it's up for the administrators' reports and those reports, but, you know, the three-hundred-and-thirty-two pages out of three-hundred-and-thirty-three are boilerplate in our agenda. And, but the committee meetings help us understand what the board is doing and bringing forward without sitting through every board meeting on our part. So, this, the somewhat abbreviated report from whoever heads the committee, I appreciate it that that be, if that could continue to be part of the meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Closing the public forum on the agenda, the next item is the Assistant Superintendent's report.
So, I'm going to combine that with the Acting Superintendent's report. I do have something curricular to report this, this week. Congratulations to the Mono Township Middle School Falcon Jazz Band who auditioned and were successfully invited to perform at the New Jersey School Boards Association Conference in Atlantic City this October. This is something that happened several weeks ago, and we've been holding out on reporting it. Some of us are going to attend the New Jersey School Boards Conference. We're actually kicking off the event, we're one of the first performances on the first day. The Falcon Jazz Band was selected from a wide variety of performing groups across the state, making this recognition especially meaningful. This marks the first time since the pandemic that one of our ensembles has been accepted to perform in this prestigious event, and will be the first time a Mono Township School District group will take the stage live at the conference in person. It's Tuesday, October twenty, October twenty-first, I believe it's eight AM, so it's first thing in the morning, and congrats to our talented students, middle school students, and the director, Mr. Dave Ratner, on this tremendous accomplishment, so congratulations. Some general updates, and I did hit on the Applegarth piece, which I also was going to touch on, but we just are very excited to welcome back our staff, our students, all of our community members. Our athletes are already practicing, we've started to have scrimmages and our first games, so we're really excited about kicking off the school year next week. This past three days, including today, I had the opportunity to present to our new staff, I did a presentation on our staff evaluation model, and the past three days they've had trainings in everything from technology to social-emotional learning, and today, they also met with their curriculum supervisors and their building principals, so they've had a very busy three days, I think they're absolutely exhausted, but they do have the next couple of days to get back in the buildings and recover in preparation for next week. Like I said earlier, we had a very strong turnout at the Applegarth Student Parent Information Night, and that was outstanding to see, and there was definitely a lot of positive feedback. There were definitely questions, some apprehensive students and parents when they came in, but we hope they feel reassured and confident in what we have in place to start out the school year. All the buildings are getting their final touches, our maintenance staff are in the buildings, they're fine-tuning the, cleaning the floors, they'll, I'm sure be working over the weekend, that's just the nature of, as we get to the end of this, the summer. All the work that we do, sometimes it just, you know, piles up right to the end, you know, fixing all the buildings, and we end up with those final polishes over the, over this last weekend. So, we're excited to see the finished products, and we will be ready and we will be open for our students next week. During the first few days, I just want to make a comment, we did hit on this earlier, transportation, we will be communicating very efficiently, very effectively, but as we know, the first three days of school, and it starts at the high school, we take extra time, which high school usually is are, you know, highly efficient, all the students get out there, they know where they're going and they get out the door. Even the first few days, we take extra time at the high school, we want to make sure everybody knows where they're going, knows how to get out of the building, knows where to find their buses, so just as an example, that's our first tier of busing. If we get a ten-minute delay there, that stacks on to a ten-minute delay at the middle school, by the time they get to elementary, they're could be running twenty, twenty-five minutes late. So, we will be in communication, we will give you a heads up where we stand, we'll also communicate when things are, you know, buses are leaving the buildings, but just be patient with us, your students and children are in very safe hands. The reason we're taking the time to dismiss everyone and even during arrival is because we want everybody to get home safely. We want to know where everybody is and make sure they have a great first, second, third, and then the rest of the school year. So, just be patient and stand by for our communication. It looks like right now we're going to have a nice Wednesday and Thursday weather-wise, so fingers crossed we're not looking at a monsoon with the parents and students standing at the bus stops, that's worst-case scenario, but right now it looks like we're going to have some good weather. And that's about it, so if we're ready to move into the recommendations?
Please, Dr. Lehman.
So, it's recommended that the board approve the attached personal items A through P under the ten-member vote. This is A through P in the ten-member vote.
Motion second.
Oh, we have questions? Oh, we have questions?
Yes. My question is not on the personnel, sorry. It goes back to enrollment. I do not see the school district enrollment. I understand that this is in the works and we'll get the final enrollment in October, but we do have, is it on purpose that it is not part of that?
We never do it all the time.
But we do have students. We set schedules, we class sizes. Why do we not do it?
I don't have any reason why. We don't typically put it in the summer. If it's, if we're looking for live enrollment in the past month, the students are enrolled in school, but they aren't physically in school right now.
Okay. I just, I understand with the July month, but I felt like going into the year, but that's all right.
Yep.
Got my answer. Thank you.
Ms. Ratner?
Yep. So, I actually have a question that's also, it's the home instruction portion. So, I see there are a few students there, obviously not knowing needs or anything like that, but there's an effective date that, you know, some of them are a year ago, basically with no end date. Is, I guess my concern is, A, cost and then providing instruction for them, is there, I guess, updates on whether or not there's a different environment that they'll need, without knowing too much about them, obviously?
So, I'll just give you some general information on the home instruction. So, home instruction, it really depends on the individual circumstances of the student. It may have an open-ended piece because that student has an open-ended situation. The other piece is, we have, depending on the absence, there is a prescribed set of hours that each student is eligible for, and then, again, if they're elementary, middle, and high school, depending on the classes, certain classes get certain home instruction. Sometimes it, depending on the student's ability to receive the instruction, you can't, maybe can't necessarily give the two hours consecutively within a week of when they need it. If that student can only be able to receive a half an hour at a time, it may take longer than, you know, prescribed time to receive that home instruction. So, there's a lot of flexibility when it comes to getting the home instruction. In terms of what they qualify for, it's a prescribed piece, and we are required to provide that. So, however long it takes, that's how long we provide that instruction.
Okay. And then, just my other question regarding the 10-member vote. There are a lot of certificated staff members under letter M that are receiving an additional 17%.
Yep.
I know I brought this up before, and, you know, I usually, I remember being told that a lot of times we use this to cover classes until long-term sub can be found or something like that, but a lot of these are full-year additional sections, and some of them are under the same subject matter.
Yep.
So, I know we had reduced our, our staff because of enrollment and budgetary concerns. I guess my concern is now, besides the increased student load, if one of these staff members then had to go out because of a medical reason or things like that, you know, not only are we, you know, now having less people to fill it, but they were covering five classes and with everyone else covering five classes.
So, to give you a, an example for several of these, these are positions we've been looking to fill, and not having the candidates to fill them at this point, before schedules were released to students, modifications were made so these courses could be covered. Otherwise, we would be reducing the amount of sections available, which increases class size. So, what we do here is we tweak the schedule so these staff members have the availability to pick up these extra sections, and that's why they're year-long. If we were to find a staff member for many of these positions now, one person wouldn't necessarily be able to cover it because we've taken that schedule and maybe run two sections at the same block at this point. So, there are sections that we have open and we're still looking to fill, but some of these ones that were exhausted candidate pools at this point, in order to maintain the quantity of sections, we're really committing to that 17% for the year.
Okay. I guess just to, sorry, just to follow up on that, because when we had our personnel call, when we looked at this, looking at the vacancy list, when comparing it to the board agenda, there are, I guess, the positions, the classes being filled are not positions that are on the vacancy list. I, that was, I guess, where some of the additional complications came from.
Right. So, as of now, those positions are no longer vacant because we're filling them this way. That's, and that's the give and take as we get right to the end of the school year or right to the end of the summer. We make those commitments for the full, long 17%. And then, we will reopen a search next year if that's the projected number of sections we need, or if there's less need for Spanish ones or twos or threes, we would allocate that staff somewhere else.
Okay. Is that an answer, Ms. Bora?
I want to add to that conversation because we, I was part of personnel this month with the vacancy. I just want to add what I understood. So, when we see the additional sections in the high school, the understanding, Ms. Ratner, that we were given was that also sometimes, based on how many students won that class, we end up starting an additional section. We don't know if next year we would need that additional section again. So, if we hire just because there are additional students interested in that class, we would then be left with that additional staff member next year. So, it, it does make sense, and I think the bigger concern is, do these staff members have the opportunity in their schedule? I, I was told that this is, this position is advertised and staff members commit to it for the whole year, giving up one of their prep or lunches, and they're doing it willingly for that extra 17%. So, in, in my head, as a board member, it did make more fiscal sense to do the additional section than hire a staff member for subjects that tend to have more interest a particular year and might not have that same interest next year. So, if it continues, it makes sense to hire for that position.
Yep. And it's just fine tuning as you get into the end of this, end of the summer. It's, we have a need, we have an interest this year in a particular area, or we're short-staffed because it's, it's a very competitive position to fill, and that's oftentimes in the world languages, maybe some of the really specific sciences, and that's how we knit it out. And we have a big enough staff that most of the time, I would say the majority of the time, even if someone has a short leave during the school year, there is the ability to pick up another 17% if a staff member needs to pick it up to help cover for something else. So, you know, when we had, we've had more 17% in previous years, many, many, many more. So, and you'll see them throughout the year. You know, a two-week leave, we'd rather fill, you know, certain ways. So, yep.
Yes, Ms. Alvarez.
Hi. I have a question on letter P. The list of substitutes, it's a long list, and I was just wondering, how are those people selected? Like, is there a process? Is it just by who applies?
So, there's an application process, and then, in terms of, there's different positions on here, right? There's avid tutors, there's paraprofessionals, and then there's teachers and security. So, the security goes through an interview process, just like a security officer would if they were applying for a full-time position. The teacher substitutes go through an interview process with a certificated administrator. Everybody gets interviewed, it's typically by assistant principals throughout the district. It could be anyone, anywhere from an elementary up to a high school assistant principal, and they make, make a recommendation to the human resources department. In terms of avid tutors, we have staff members, we have administrators and teachers that work with our avid staff, and we certainly screen them and vet them before they participate as well. So, I think that covers, there is a vetting and a screening process for all of our substitutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Aziz.
I have a question for Mr. Weiss. As a brand-new board member, am I, are there any restrictions on what I can vote for, or can I vote on anything barring things that conflict of interest?
So, the easy answer is that as a board member, you're permitted to vote on any matter. The question of whether or not you, you feel that you have enough information to base your decision on is, is a personal question and totally within your discretion to either vote or not vote. So, it's totally within your discretion, and if you feel that you have enough information to make a vote, there's nothing to stop you from doing so.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Alvarez? Yes. Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano? Oh, sorry. Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes, to all, recuse on P.
Okay. And Ms. DePain?
Yes, to all, recuse on number 57, page 16, as it refers to a relative.
Okay. Motion passes.
It is recommended that the board approve the attached board action items Q through AM. It's a personnel nine-member vote.
Motion, second.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ratner.
Sure. No problem. I just wanted to ask about letter AH. Is this something that is in addition to mentoring, or is this for other people?
So, this is something, so we use title funds to do this. This is something that is within the grant that we get, and this is a support that we offer, and this is the buddy teacher. So, if you're a new teacher to the profession, you're required to have a mentor, right? And you pay for the mentor, and it's just, it's a part of your licensure requirement. If you're a new teacher to the district, but you already have your license, right? So, you've come from another district, this is something we put into place to support those teachers, and it could be as supporting them in everything as, who do I call to get information about payroll or want to change my last name or my health benefits? Or it could be, how do I log into, they do new teacher orientation, but how, you know, who do I reach out to get this information? So, these staff members will work with new-to-the-district teachers that are already certificated and don't have that traditional mentor-teacher.
Okay. And this is only at the schools where Title I is, or we can use them for all of our schools?
No, this isn't, this is title-funded. It's not necessarily Title I-funded.
Oh, okay.
It's title-funded. I believe it's Title II, and this is any school, any school. Yep. So, this is district-wide.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Allen? Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
It's recommended that the board approve the attached board action items A through R under the board action 10-member vote.
Motion, second.
You have a question, Ms. Alvarez?
Oh, she can go first.
Well, she was closer to me because I saw her first.
Even though I was practicing my speed after last time, so...
Well, I used to, I know with the speed, but she, I saw hers first, so.
Go ahead, Ms. Alvarez, you have a question?
First, I have a comment. I wanted to congratulate Dr. Lehman on being elected to the Representative Assembly of the Educational Services Commission. That's good news. He'll be on there until the end of June. So, congratulations. And then, I had a question on letter J. Do we approve these vendors only once a year, or do they get added throughout the year? Or is this the only time?
So, that's, that's a very good question, and I actually answered it for someone else, but I'd love to share with the public. So, these are locations, and they're places where our Mono Township High School community-based learning and work-based learning programs regularly visit. So, our special program students, inclusive of our 18 to 20, 21-year-old students, as well as some of our high school students, we typically, and we will continue, to approve these locations through our field trip, field trip process. But what this does is it allows for some flexibility because occasionally, on our end, we need to change the location we're going to, but additionally, we get additional opportunities to go on a special occasion to recognize some sort of event, and with these approved this way, it gives us the ability to kind of change the location and still, still pay them, right? They're now an approved vendor, as opposed to being one-off approved every time they go there through the field trip process. We still go through the field trip process for all of our regular scheduled trips. We get, we do that for transportation coordination, we do that for board notification, but, and there are other places they go. There are definitely other locations they go, but these were the ones, and we had a situation, not situation, we had an opportunity last spring where we went through special permission to get one of these classes, the opportunity to go on an unscheduled visit that was in between board, board meetings. So, this is something we talked about last year, and we're kind of chunking some of these items so we can pre-approve them, which gives our students the opportunity to engage in these activities, especially when they come up, you know, in between board meetings.
Yes.
We can be flexible. Again, it, sometimes a staffing piece on our end requires a change in date, change in location, flipping one, one location to another, and we can still move forward with those events.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes. I wanted to ask about, I lost it. All right, we're over here. I'm sorry. The, turn it, turn it in.
That's what I was going to speak about.
Oh, okay.
I gave you the update. So, we approved it last, last, last board meeting.
Right.
We began to update our rostering, and there was a discrepancy. We needed to register more students. We needed to increase the enrollment. It adjusted the price by just about $800, $850. So, the way we pay bills and the way we approve things, it's to the exact dollar amount. So, we have a revised and updated document. The business office is prepared to execute our, our payment. We just need to update the, the new, new approval.
Okay.
Can I follow up on the same thing?
Okay.
I, I had talked to Dr. Lehman, and he'd explained that to me, but I have a technical question on that. So, we approved it last board meeting for $16,000 and change.
Yep.
We're changing the amount, so does this automatically override the last meeting's approval?
Yes.
So, we don't have to...
Yep, because we have an updated quote. We have an updated everything.
So, legally, it's not two approvals for two amounts?
I, I think what you're asking, Ms. Bora, is are there actually two purchase orders with two different amounts? Because that would be a problem. But it sounds to me that whatever purchase order may have previously been issued would be deleted or canceled.
And we don't need to take any executive action if that purchase order is canceled?
No. We just have a new rate, and we're going to approve the rate, and then, I would imagine Ms. Allen's going to cancel out that other purchase order.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, I also wanted to ask regarding, there was something on here for Reed Sound, and I know this is something that's come up at the Buildings and Grounds Meeting in the past, because a lot of times, there's been a rather high charge, and our policy regulates that the, whoever uses the performing arts centers, whether it's inside or outside companies, have to use the approved vendor. I know we had had this discussion, I think it was last year, and Mr. Take had said that he had been, you know, open to the possibility of other companies, but it was hard to find them. I do recall also being told that outside organizations, possibly inside, but that seems a little bit more concerning, I guess, can use a different vendor if they're still willing to pay for the 10-hour minimum of Reed Sound because of all the other potential incidentals that might make it more expensive, but that's not in our policy. So, I guess, sort of my, my question would be, because it's not in our policy, is that something that is allowed? And if it is allowed, is that something that we should be providing to the public as an option?
I think your question was directed to me. And quite frankly, this is the first I'm hearing of that arrangement, which had, is a cause for a couple different areas of concern for me. So, my suggestion would be that the policy committee send the policy to me to review. I do have a concern that I'm not going to get into really here, but about this vendor issue, and, and, you know, the process by which that vendor may have been selected, identified, and/or required to be used. So, that's just a, you know, something that I'd look, like to look into, but in terms of the, the policy itself, there's tons of flexibility that the board has as it relates to whatever rules and restrictions it wants to put on the use of facilities. So, I would say the policy should really reflect what this board wants in terms of, you know, boots on the ground, if you will, and how, how you want your equipment to be handled, how you want, you know, who you want to touch your equipment, if anyone. I do have districts that require a, a district staff person to be there to utilize the sound if it's going to be the in-house sound system and lighting system. So, there's all different ways that you can do this in order to not only afford access to, to the public, but also to protect the, the district's resources.
Mr. Piero, would we be able to consider adding that to the BGNT agenda for one of the upcoming months?
Yeah. I, I was under the impression that we ironed that all out. I didn't think you could use anybody you wanted. I was under the impression that we had a contract. I know, like, my experience here is Reed Sound used to do these board meetings. Now, we're, they're done by our staff. My understanding is that our staff does the majority of things, and the things our staff don't do.
Uh, Mr. Piro, would we be able to consider adding that to the BGNT agenda for one of the upcoming months?
Yeah, I, I was under the impression that we ironed that all out. I didn't think you could use anybody you wanted. I was under the impression that, uh, we had a contract. I know, like, um, my experience here is Reed Sound used to do these board meetings. Now we're, they're done by our staff. My understanding is that, um, our staff does the majority of things, and the things our staff don't do.
We go.
And Reed Sound is the contractor, because it's the continuity of the equipment and the property and what's used, where I don't, I don't ever recall us saying that anybody can.
I have to second what he said, that we did review another sound company, and then we came back to Reed Sound.
Yes.
Right.
Uh, so that's the approved vendor by the board.
Yes.
Now, to your point, the policy should, again, definitely be looked at.
Mm-hmm.
But whoever is sent to the policy has to be approved by the committee and the board.
And I believe it was all about the equipment and the use of it, and we didn't want anybody just coming in, because it's expensive.
Right. That, that, and that was, you know, my point, and I think when we had, you know, discussed this, I don't remember if we had finalized.
I think it's the middle school also, too.
We did finalize Reed Sound.
Yeah.
Right, no, 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 we finalized Reed Sound, let me clarify. So there was, um, community organizations outside that have been told at one point, as long as they're still hiring someone to supervise from Reed Sound.
I, well, they had to hire Reed Sound. It's not su, it, they're hiring Reed Sound to, the, I don't think they could hire Reed Sound and come in and watch them touch the equipment.
Can we wait and discuss this in, in your policy or BGNT?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then just, yeah, right. My other, my other quick thing was the policy, just, um, regarding the honor roll and principals list, which, um, I believe we have up for first read tonight. Is that correct? I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's for the first, or the second?
The second, right?
It's the, it's the regulation.
Regulation.
And because there were substantial changes, it's back up for the first read.
Okay.
And what we, uh, discussed in committee was, we would move it forward with the changes to the honor roll piece, which were, uh, not controversial, not discussed, and not really an issue of concern, um, because they were updated to align with practice and consistent as a transition from the elementary up to the high school. And we reverted the National Honor Society piece back to its original standing, uh, and we're gonna revisit that in October.
Right, which I, I did want to thank administration for hearing the concerns of, you know, both the board members and the, um, community on that. Um, for regulations, I did have a legal, you keep smiling at me. Um, having watched...
I have a feeling what your question is.
Okay, I see. Um, so having watched, um, some surrounding districts' board meetings, one thing that came up at a nearby town was that regulations do not require two, is that what you knew was coming? [laughing] Is, is that accurate? I don't think it hurts to have a second one, but from a legal standpoint.
So from a legal standpoint, um, a board regulation is different from a board policy. A board policy is aspirational. It's what the, um, the Board of Ed would like to see in the district, and the regulation is the action items that implements those, that policy. Um, typically, it's actually up to the superintendent to make regulations in most school districts. Um, and the boards do review the regulations. Most boards adopt the regulations. Um, from a legal perspective, is it required that there's two readings on a regulation? I don't believe that there is, but it's my understanding that it's this board's practice to do it that way. So I would suggest that you continue that practice, and to the extent there's a need for an emergency regulation, or an emergency change to a regulation, you could always do it that night, read it that night, and then read it again at the next meeting, just like you would an emergency policy.
Okay.
I'm good.
Good. We can move on. Was there a motion?
Yes, um, so...
And who seconded it? Sorry.
Carmen.
It's been a while, so who seconded the motion?
Carmen's seconded.
Absolutely.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
So Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on letter A for Dr. Lehman and Mr. Snyder, as well as for letter D for Dr. Lehman.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So it's recommended that the board approve the attached Board Action items S through V under the Board Action nine-member vote.
Motion. Second.
Okay. No questions?
No questions.
Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number fourteen, the Business Administrators' Report.
Okay. Um, it is recommended that Board Action items A through S be approved by consent roll call under a ten-member vote.
Motion.
Second. Are there any questions or...
Oh, no, sorry. No, I don't.
Ms. Bora?
I just have a comment. I would like to thank all the donors, um, all the sponsors for our advertising program, Elias Presso and Elias Council, Country View Farms Nursery, and the Monroe Education Foundation for supporting our district's educational aspirations. And I think I missed one, the Booster Club donation for five dollars.
That's what I was gonna tell.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes to all, abstain on A two.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes to all, abstain on A two, and, uh, item B, the bill list, check number nine, three-three-three.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Ratner?
I, uh, just a point of inquiry. Um, so for the bill list, I've always listed each of the bill numbers, um, and obviously want to make sure I'm covering myself. Um, do I need to do each individual bill number as I've been doing, or is it okay if I make more of a statement of the individual or something like that?
Yeah, I think, um, it's form over substance, to be honest with you. Uh, I, I think that you would be okay, or I should say, put it to you this way, it's my legal opinion that you would be okay if you were to say, for example, and just judging from memory on, uh, whom you typically, uh, recuse your, or abstain from, I think it would be okay for you to say, um, approve all bills, or yes to all bills, with the exception of any payments to Mr. Ratner, so-and-so, so-and-so, and so-and-so. That way, um, you will, you don't have to go through each line item, which you probably do before each board meeting, um, to find the individual checks. I think that you can make a, a statement that you're abstaining on all pay, all payments, claims, and bills.
Wait, payments? Claims, okay.
For, for those people, whichever individuals you want to individually name. I think that that is effective that way, from an ethics, um, as far as a school ethics perspective would go.
Mr. Piro?
Yeah, I, I have a question for Mr. Weiss. So under letter N, um, these approved sponsorships for district advertising, the first one, Elias Council, um, wasn't there pending litigation with us, and he's a sponsor of our district?
Um, my understanding is that at some point, he represented an employee of the district, but I don't believe that, um, he himself has, uh, any pending litigation with the district on behalf of himself or his businesses.
But this is a renewal, so that means he was on it at the time he had litigation against us.
I'm looking at, uh, item N says it's recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve the following sponsorships.
Under him.
Oh, then it does say in the parenthetical.
So he was representing an employee at the same time he was advertising within the district. I don't think that's appropriate.
Um, it's, from my perspective, that's not necessarily a legal issue.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it were not.
I, did you want me to do my, my vote? I'm sorry, I just wanted clarification before I voted. Okay, sorry. Um, so, yes to all, abstain due to conflict on numbers two and four, um, as well as abstain, uh, due to conflict on the bill list, um, approve all payments, claims, and bills, except for, um, on the bill list, and addendum one and addendum two for Mr. Ratner, uh, Dr. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, Mr. Snyder, Dr. Higgins, Mr. Lurie, Ms. Francis, Ms. Bruzy Lithgow, Methesal Werble, and David Rubin.
Yeah, okay. Um, Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Uh, yes, abstain on N.
Okay. Um, and Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. It is recommended that Board Action items T through X be approved by consent roll call under a nine-member vote.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions about this? Ms. Ratner?
Yep, I just wanted to, um, acknowledge the donations from the, um, Billitz Corporation, uh, for the middle school, for a donation of the whiteboards, corkboards, and, uh, desk riser. Um, yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Allen?
Yep. Uh, Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes. I'm going to abstain due to conflict on the grant for letter T. Um, otherwise, yes to all.
Okay. Um, Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
And Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, next is the Board President's Report. Um, I did sign some paperwork at the board office this week, and also approved some early checks, but I, I want to read something that means a lot to me, and it's coming from my heart. And I think all of us on this board have a heart for the children of this district. As elected officials who volunteer their time, we do not come to meetings to be ridiculed, to be, be the brunt of gossip on social media, or even have our name called out at a board meeting. There is something I recently found on Facebook. It said, "Remember you are entitled to your opinion, but you're not entitled to tell me mine, what mine must be." Please keep that in mind, and this is for everybody, I'm, I'm talking to the board, we only have a couple people out there. One is my husband. Uh, please keep in mind, when coming to the microphone to speak, we will try to answer all your questions or concerns, either the night of the meeting or in the very close future. I hope that everyone in this community realizes that we are all here to make sure that the children of Monroe Township School District have the best education possible, and that we are fiscally responsible to all the stakeholders in Monroe. I would like to ask that everyone who speaks at meetings will do so with the children and the district in mind. Any questions not answered that evening will be answered as soon as possible. It might be nice to get an occasional compliment. I just threw that in there, because I think everybody during your day, during your life, needs a pat on the back. And we all deserve a pat on the back for all the jobs and all the volunteer hours that we do. We don't have to agree all the time, okay? But we have to compromise and come together as one when it comes to providing our students the best education possible. I want to wish everyone a happy, safe, and productive school year. And I also want to add this sentence I came up with the other day. I hope all comments from now on are constructive and not destructive. So please, keep that in mind, everybody who's listening. We will listen to anything that you would like to bring to us, but we work hard on this board, and we don't need anybody to come in here and put us down for any reasons. So that's my comments for the evening. Thank you. Other board members, other Board of Education business, Ms. Ratner?
I'm really getting...
I kept my hand down. Mostly, I'm gonna raise it now.
[laughing] Um, so, just to piggyback, Ms. DePain, I agree with you. I think that the social media stuff needs to, you know, die down. We're, we're in campaign season. It gets very, uh, you know, stressful, um, and creates a lot of chaos, and I think if, you know, I don't know how many times I've said, if we can just all work together, I think, you know, we can move forward much more. You know, I know for some people, there's been a lot, and I understand it's hard, but whatever we can do to do our best. Um, I, Dr. Lehman, I know you mentioned, um, that when we do the strategic plan update, we'll get, uh, an update on full-day kindergarten. Um, just knowing that this is something that's been, you know, certainly like a passion of mine, um, and I know there's a lot of others on the board and in the community, um, I was wondering if it might be possible, um, not necessarily to make an actual ad hoc committee for kindergarten, but perhaps, um, sometime in the curriculum committee, I guess, is probably where it would, you know, be best to get updates on this. I know we were hoping for next September. I understand, you know, sometimes there are things that get in the way of that, but just so, um, we have a more clear picture each month as we progress. That would be wonderful. Um, let's see, two other things. Uh, in addition to the Genesis contacts, um, one thing that, you know, we had worked on in the Lee's Committee was the calendar on the website. Um, so I think there are, you know, a lot of people are aware, you can now subscribe to the district calendar, and it'll be automatically synced up to your Google Calendar, which I love. Um, one thing that I, I don't know if we've streamlined yet is, each school has its own separate calendar as well, that if you want the updates for that, when we had created, I think you had to sync up to them separately, so going on to the specific school's website and subscribing to that calendar also. Um, so if that's something that is of interest to you, um, just make sure to go ahead and do that. Uh, and then just the, the last thing, um, I think it was Mr. Gunkelman who brought it up, but the committee reports. Um, I try to watch all the board, the committee meetings when I can. Um, I definitely feel that, you know, I know there are some people who do, some people who do it on occasion, but I do think there are certain things that we're not learning about, um, that we're missing. You know, there's things that come up, whether someone's sick and they don't get the minutes up there. Maybe we can make a plea to have it shorter, the reports, and just do the highlights instead, so that way it's not lengthy reports. But I, I do think it would be nice, even if the committee, um, chairs just maybe gave two or three highlights or something, or any, you know, I, which I think is what we had sort of suggested, but I would like from each committee to sort of hear that, because it is kind of challenging to get that, especially some months more than others. So that would just be my request.
Yeah, I, I don't think that would be a problem. I mean, if it's left not a half-hour, forty-five-minute, you know, report about your committee, but like you said, the highlights, because the highlights are the one things that everybody wants to hear. Mr. Piro asked if he can talk about Apple Garden. That's important. Uh, because all spoke, I'm sorry, Ms. Bora spoke about hers, because we had problems that night. So I think, you know, if it's up to everybody, I think we should bring it back. It's up to, you know, everybody here, but in, I can't get the word out of my mouth.
Brief.
Brief, thank you.
Brief.
Briefiated highlights, okay? And I think, um, that would be fine. And just abbreviated highlights, and thank you. The word just went right out of my head, and so.
All right. Thank you, and just I hope everybody has a great start to the school year, and be patient.
Uh, Ms. Bora, and then, uh, Mr. Zeichner?
Uh, to piggyback on, uh, what Ms. Ratner said about the kindergarten, so we've had a few offline discussions with Dr. Lehman. Um, my understanding is that even though we haven't, as a board and as committee, started talking about it, the administration has been putting in work, so that they can start to bring their recommendations. That's how board work works, like, they do the work, they bring their recommendations to us, or their preliminary plans. So this board is expecting to see, uh, those discussions to start in September. Uh, Dr. Lehman has assured us that all the groundwork that they've been doing for the last few months, we will start to hear about it in various committees. I personally, as curriculum chair and finance chair, am looking to start these discussions soon, uh, in my committee, hopefully in September. Um, and I understand that the public really would like to see where we're going. So we're all on the same page there. Uh, just wanted to shed some light on what's been happening. Uh, there is work happening, it's just not concrete enough to start public and board, board-level discussions.
Right.
Um, Ms. Ratner, you spoke about two things. What was the other thing that you spoke about?
Committee reports.
Committee reports. Second that, everybody's on the same page. And then I did raise my hand for a personal plea myself. Um, I, I agree with you on the social media. It's been the bane of my existence as a board member, and I have hope, since Ms. Aziz is sitting on the board with us, her page will stop with the attacks that have been made on me last four years. But more than that, I think my plea is about the outcome of those conversations that happen on social media with not all the information. Today, we approved four legal cases. As a finance chair, I had my committee bill, you know, discuss the legal and all the, all the legal expenses in the last ten years, and we looked at that, and that number on cases, legal cases that are mostly ethic cases, is staggering. It's the money that would go towards our students. And I've made this plea before, I'm gonna make it again today, as board members, as community members, if we can pause and see what has been the outcome of all of these If we can pause and see what has been the outcome of all of these ethics cases, in all of these years, have you ever seen a board member impacted? They come, they serve for three years, there are multiple charges filed by public members or other board members. They leave after three years, what has happened? We wasted thousands of dollars. So my plea is to everybody, not one side, not the other side, not a consensus community member, all of us. When we do this, I think it just makes sense to pause and see, what will this bring to me? I, as a board member, have seen a lot of things that shouldn't be happening, happen, and it's been tempted to, tempting to file an ethics case, but given that we're a district struggling with funds, I know that I'm going to put that money out, not see an outcome. Maybe I should try to work with the board member on the side, maybe try to have- These cases are taking money away from our programs. I cannot stress this enough. You can go back and look at that finance meeting where we discussed it, you know, Oprah, those records, if you can find them, if they're publicly available. I cannot stress enough that that's the cultural change we need to bring to this board and to the town. We need to stop, and all due respect to law firms, they're making money out of us, but it's not helping us improve as a district. It's just, it's scaring people away from doing this community work. It's, it's an unnecessary pull-down on all of us, on our budget. And if I can say one thing, I have five more months left on this board, we need to stop filing these unnecessary ethics charges. It needs to be really for a cause that needs to be addressed immediately. Other things, just see what the outcomes are. Go back and do your research. What have been the outcomes of these cases? Who has ever been hurt? Only the students. So that was my two minutes, Pirro, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. I, I don't even read any of the social media. I just look at Facebook when my children are on there, my grandchildren, to see what they're up to. So I don't even, I don't even enjoy reading any of that stuff, you know? So, um, that's just me personally. But, uh, everything that was said tonight, we're heading in that direction. And I think if the, we keep reiterating out to the town and to the community, um, it's going to get there. It's going to get there, it's going to be slow but sure, but, you know, don't read it. Why do you want to get yourself upset, you know? So my suggestion is, don't read it. But, okay, any, anybody else? Yes, Mr. Zeichner?
And I'll, I'll be quick. I, I want to just mention that I think we are getting changed, and things are occurring, and I'm excited about it. And I think parents should be excited about where we're going. And, and, you know, time, change takes time. It doesn't happen overnight. It takes time, it takes planning, and it takes people who can get it done in place. And so you just have to, you just have to be willing to give it time. And, and that leads me to my next point, and that is that I was delighted to see that kindergarten mandate come out. And, and I, and I thought, maybe I shouldn't say anything about it, but then I said to myself, you know what? You should. Because some people are not aware, who serve on this board, the research, and I, I know you know about the research, not, uh, Dr. Lehman, but the research on kindergarten, full-day kindergarten, is, will blow you away. Kids who are full-day kindergarten, who attend full-day kindergarten academically, take off. It's, it's amazing what they're capable of doing and how quick they grow. And, and, I mean, all of the research in that, you could, just got to read the research. And the same thing with, um, pre-kindergarten, there's research on that, too, that tells you, you know, how, what it, the, the impact it has on our students. So, you know, I'm, I was delighted to see that. And, and the last thing I have to say has to do with, I like the idea of somewhat streamlining, streamlining this board, um, getting things done where we, we're not here until twelve o'clock at night. So I, I like the idea that you guys came up with, it's a great idea, you know? So I thank you all. That's it, that's all I have to say.
Okay, anybody else have, Ms. Alvarez?
I just have a quick comment. I want to welcome Ms. Aziz to the board. I wanted to say that I voted for you because you've watched every meeting since two thousand and nineteen, and my experience as a board member has been that there's a huge learning curve, and I just stopped being, this is a short, uh, position, that you would be able to slide right in, and we could continue with our business. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And can I also welcome you too, Ms. Aziz? And that was a lot of my reasoning for voting for you. I, before I even ran for the board, I used to sit with you at meetings here, two thousand and nineteen, and, um, talk to you and get the facts and learn from you. So I, I figured, for five months, four months, we don't have to teach you anything. You'll have to listen to us, okay? But we won't have to teach you anything because you have been following us since two thousand and nineteen, or probably earlier. And I did meet your daughter in the high school at an event, a daughter that has her disability, and she's sweet and wonderful. And I'm very proud of your involvement with NJDDC, because I used to work for a group that had, that, we used to work with them before I retired. So I think that's great that you're involved with all that, too. So you're involved out, in, your children, you're very well-rounded. So I'm glad to welcome you to the board and hope we have, uh, five months of good meetings with everybody, okay?
I appreciate your support.
Usha, you have a comment?
I know, at the end, towards-
At the end, I know. What's it?
I just want to say, welcome to Ms. Aziz, you know, that's good. It's a good decision and a choice we have taken. And at the end, I just want to say, we all have to work together with respect, with patience, listen to each other. If you don't agree, talk very nicely, you know, pleasantly, and then give your decision. Because what, going on social media, writing everything, is not making it work together. We have to work together with respect and listen to each other. That's what I have to say. Very professionally, we have to handle it.
Thank you, all your comments, positive, wonderful, and we're going to be in the right direction, so.
Oh, I, yes, I bet.
Good, um, anybody else have any comments?
I, I gotta make-
You said you only had a short one, you got another one?
I know, but if I don't do this, she's going to drive me crazy.
Oh, no, Ms. Ratner?
I really have to change this. Uh, I gotta change my vote on the, um, on the Board Action number three, letter A, uh, to, uh, what is it? It's, uh, yeah, I got abstained from that.
I know what it is, okay, that's fine.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
And it went right over my head.
That's okay, hey.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank Dr. Lehman and Ms. Allen for doing all the good work they've been doing. I know I'm adding to our, to our meeting, but, yeah. But Dr. Lehman, um, he hasn't missed a beat, and Ms. Allen the same way. So we're very lucky in this district to have these two people on board, and I want to thank them. Okay, that's it, anybody else have anything to say? We have, um, public forum. Anybody from the public who would like to speak, please come up, you have four minutes. I guess seeing none? Anyone make a motion to close the meeting?
So, so motion.
Mr. Pirro, is there a second?
Second.
Everybody seconded, so, okay.
Aye.
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 Well, I didn't get a chance. The ayes have it. Everyone enjoy the rest of your time and your holiday weekend.